We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilmember McKellar, followed by the pledge. Please stand.
Would you bow your heads and pray with me, please? The God of Isaac, the God of Jacob, and the God of Isaiah. We come just now asking you, Father, to bless us. Bless the God of this nation, the same God, Father, who died on the cross of Calvary between the twilights of two worlds and said, "Peace be still." And, Father, we ask you to come with us now to bless us as we begin this day. We begin with offering those chores that we need to do in order to serve those people that are in the city of Tyler. Father, we ask you to bless the chiefs of this city, and not just the chief, but the staff that work infatigably hard every single day for the greater good of the city of Tyler, Texas. And, Father, now, we ask you to be with us, guide us, and direct us. And we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Pray, Father, that we will serve them equally and equitably, and that we would do the things that's pleasing and acceptable in your sight. In the name of Jesus, we pray. And let my Father's children say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from February the 12th, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A1.
Let's see. Is Stephanie here? Yeah. Ashley, come on up. I was thinking Stephanie was actually doing the presentation on this one. Yes.
Surprise to me as well. Good morning. So, we're here to ask that the city council consider accepting the award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. It is the 2024 Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award, and this is the first year that we've applied, and we've gotten it. So, our request is the city council accept this reward on behalf of the library.
And just a little bit further about this, Mayor. Ashley is being relatively humble for her and her staff. This was the Texas Municipal Libraries Directors Association has kind of created a process to evaluate and look to see what are the top libraries in the state. And a number of, as far as libraries, public libraries submitted, and as well as our own. Tyler Public Library is only one out of 102 that have earned the 2024 award, and that's out of 524 public library systems in Texas that were able to submit. And so, this puts us in the top 19% of all public libraries in the state. It goes to show just as far as with our library staff, the work that they do, the activities, and just the impact that they make, and it's recognized by our state in relationship to this. And so, with that, do you have like an optional award or anything? Or is there digital?
I did not print anything.
Oh, it's a printer. They're also very cheap. All on paper.
Budget conscious, budget conscious, yes.
You know, I would say this. Ashley, I love the library. And Ed and I went a couple Friday nights ago and judged the pie contest. I didn't realize until the next day when it was in the paper that it was actually Pie Day. Three fourteen, is that right? And I didn't realize why we're doing Pie Day on Pie Day. But to see the kids in there with their parents that have made sweets and pies, it's more than just about books. It's about family and socializing. And so, when I see all the programming that you guys do, I'm really blown away. When I see the number of library passes y'all print every year, it just, people think libraries are dying. The Tyler Library is not dying. And it is flourishing, and I'm thankful for you and your staff and everything y'all do. So, here's a hand to your award.
As part of the application process, they want to know how we serve the community, and the library is more than just books. It's about serving our community and making sure that we are meeting the needs of the community. We're going out, we're spreading the love of literacy, and the love of Pie Day. That is the brainchild of Rosanna Bennett, and she is here today, our reference librarian. So, we love our community, and we love serving our community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. If you had an award, we'd come in there and take a picture.
All right, Lauren.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to introduce Kevin Cashin from Gallaudet, Morgan &amp; Petty, who will be presenting the annual financial statements for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Gallaudet, Morgan &amp; Petty has been instrumental in preparing these statements alongside our finance department, and Kevin will provide an overview of the financial position and performance for the year ending September 30th, 2024. And then, after the presentation, I'll request that the council approve the annual comprehensive financial report as presented by Gallaudet, Morgan &amp; Petty.
Morning, Kevin.
Morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to be here today. We were able to meet with the Audit Committee, and I'll thank them here at the end recently and go over this in detail. I promise you, I will not go into as much detail today with you. First of all, let's see. Okay. Awards and recognitions today. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for, excuse me, it's 38 years consecutive now. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award was 18 consecutive years, and your Investment Policy Certificate of Distinction, now you've received that award for 14 consecutive years.
Can we stop there?
Yes, you may. We can. Looking at the financial statements, we issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion. This is the highest opinion we can render for the city of Tyler. There's two other reports that require in relation to a single audit. Financial reporting over your controls related to your financial reports, there were two recording, internal control had no material weaknesses noted, there were no reportable matters related to compliance with your financial reporting. Then the other report deals specifically with your grant funding related to the financial aid that you receive. That was an unmodified or clean opinion as well. The major programs that we tested this year were your Section 8 Housing, ARPA, which is Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Fund, and also Metropolitan Transportation Planning. And again, we had no issues of compliance related to any of those programs. Okay, financial highlights. Net position at the end of 9/30/24 was $638 million. You had an overall increase in net position of $36.2 million. Total revenues, and this rate relates back to your general fund, were $204,000, just below budget, so pretty flat year. Primarily, your big drop was in your sales tax. Your total expenditures were slightly over budget, $37,000, so pretty flat when compared with your budget for the year. Your general fund did have a decrease this year of $5.2 million because of all the things that took place. Just to give you kind of a breakdown of what that net position that we mentioned earlier looks like, the biggest part of that is what's called net investment and capital assets. That's $542 million. That's the big chunk. There's a lot of assets, a lot of infrastructure in the city. There's restricted assets of a net position of $114 million. And then, that negative portion, if you remember, you know, back in the good old days when we had to adopt Gatsby 6875, we had to put those pension liabilities and everything on the books that threw us into a negative position. But again, we have continued to see that kind of climb back, but that was 18 million. To acknowledge everybody and their help, first and foremost, you do have a great finance department. I appreciate them, Kedrick, Lauren, and Lynn, and all the team there. They helped us do a lot with this, and we appreciate them so much. The Audit Committee, the Mayor, Ms. Hawkins, Stewart, we thank you so much for your help and everything, and then, of course, with Ed. And then Blake provided a lot of support and help too from his position as financial and analyst. Any questions today on your report? Anything the Audit Committee would like to add from our discussion?
Any comments?
That's an executive summary, for sure.
That is a short summary. Is that it?
That's it.
Wow. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
You need to talk to Jim Lambeth. He had a 30-minute presentation. All right, how it's a, intercontinental motion for P1.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who?
Second.
Got a motion by Nick, second by Haney. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Was that an action item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. P2.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tiffany Curry from Tyler Water Utilities, and very excited to introduce you to Jim Forbes with Pipeline Analysis today. Most of you have heard from him before, but he is here to give a consent decree update. As you know, Tyler Water Utilities has been working diligently since 2017 to make progress on our EPA-mandated consent decree program, and Jim Forbes has guided us every step of the way. So, he's got some great updates here for you today.
Thank you, Tiffany. And since the financial person was so short, I'll extend mine another two hours. I appreciate the extra time. Yes, thank you. Mayor and Council, I'm here to provide you an update on where we're at on the consent decree associated with the wastewater collection system. And as you know, back in April, as of April 10th of this year, we'll be starting year nine of the 10-year consent decree. And one thing about it, it's a 10-year consent decree, but it's really 10 years plus one. You have to stay in compliance one year after the consent decree. So, we're on, we're going to be starting year nine, but we still have a couple of years to get everything in order. I think it's important to talk where we've been and what's going to be the life after the consent decree. As you're aware, you have, or maybe you're not aware, you have 718 miles of sanitary sewer underneath the ground. If you were to put that end to end, it would reach from here to Denver, Colorado. That's a lot of assets. Your staff has done a wonderful job on this consent decree, maintaining those assets and coming up with recommendations on how to keep those assets, extending the life of those assets another 100 years. We have an aging infrastructure, and it will continue to require preventive maintenance. So, after this consent decree is done, it doesn't mean all these programs that have been instigated are going to go away. They're going to have to be continued. Asset management and construction costs will continue to increase. We've seen large increases in the last couple of years, and we anticipate those construction costs will increase over time also. Programs and staffing initiated by the consent decree will need to be continued. At the end of this consent decree doesn't mean you can ignore your system again. It's one of these things that are going to have to continue on. Currently, you have a high-frequency cleaning program that the staff has taken on and has been instrumental in reducing the SSOs, the sanitary sewer overflows, that are really the major concern for the environment and EPA. Fat oil and grease program, staff has put together, well, staff including legal has put together ordinances to prevent fat oil and grease from restaurants getting into the sanitary sewer. And now, the staff is monitoring that program and making sure people are in compliance and that it eliminates these blockages that have occurred in the past. Sustainable Capacity Management, Operation, Maintenance, the SEMON Plan was developed, and it's a sustainable program. It's a document that documents everything that's going on in the wastewater collection system. It's both a training tool, but it also gives guidance as far as how these programs are going to be implemented and who's responsible for implementing those programs. That is updated annually, and it was just recently updated, and it's posted on the city's website. Ongoing asset condition assessment rehabilitation programs. Right now, you're on a 10-year cycle of monitoring, or seven to 10-year cycle of monitoring your assets, determining their condition, determining what needs to be repaired. So, once every seven years, you're going to go out there and look at that manhole again, and if you see structural issues or problems, you can fix those while it's relatively inexpensive instead of waiting to failure. Right now, you're monitoring the sanitary sewer overflows, and that's the key to success in this consent decree is being proactive when it comes to making those repairs. If we look at a typical performance curve, some of your sewer out there was put in in 1912, and this is a 1912 Ford being built up there. And I'm not sure there's many of those running down the streets anymore, but your assets are still doing their job. So, when they were put in, it was brand new. Over time, it starts to deteriorate, and if we don't do anything, then we're going to have failure. And that's the most expensive thing you can do is run these assets to failure. So, how do we extend the life of assets? We do it through rehabilitation. We evaluate it every so many years. In this case, every seven to 10 years, we evaluate those assets, and that way, we extend the life of those assets. An example is your 54-inch pipe that runs to the treatment plant. It was clay pipe. It wasn't in real good condition, but now it's been lined with fiberglass. So, now, it's basically been renewed, and now it can extend the life another 100 years. And that's how we do it at least cost. So, here's the metric that EPA and the TCEQ are going to use to evaluate your system. It's going to be the primary one is sanitary sewer overflows. A well-performing system should be below five SSOs per 100 miles of sewer. The trend since 2017 is downward by 53%. You've reduced your SSO since the beginning of this consent decree. With ongoing repairs and now capacity improvements underway, this trend, I almost guarantee you, will continue that downward trend. We are currently at 1.8 SSOs per 100 miles as of this week, but we still have nine months left in the year that we have to get through. Note that we ended 2024 with 7.1 SSOs per 100 miles, was slightly above normal rainfall for that year.
Jim, can you explain what a sanitary sewer overflow is?
Sure. I'm sorry. Sanitary sewer overflow is where there's a blockage in the sewer, and it backs up the sewage, and it comes up out of the manhole. It leaves the system. You have wastewater that leaves the system. That's sanitary sewer overflow. According to EPA and TCEQ, if one drop leaves the system, that's considered an SSO, sanitary sewer. It's a failure of your system to transport the wastewater to the treatment plant. That can be caused by breaks in the sewer. It can be caused by roots getting into the sewer. It can be due to fat oil and grease from a restaurant dumping their grease into the sewer, and it causes blockages. It can also be caused by rainfall, and rainfall finds its way into the sanitary sewer, and the system doesn't have the capacity to move it down. So, it comes up out of the manholes.
Thank you.
P2. If we look at the causes of SSOs in 2024, the largest contributor was sewer breaks. There were 11 of them, mainly on lift station forced mains that are being now designed for replacement. These are old forced main sewers that have degraded to the point where they need to be replaced. Contractor damage. There's a lot of construction going on every day out there, and we have some contractors that have broken into sewers and caused SSOs. In this case, in the last year, there was five of them. Breaks due to erosion. There's a lot of creeks. There's a lot of sewer near the creeks, and those creek bank erosion takes place, and it has taken out some of the sanitary sewer went along those lines. Currently, staff is working with contractors to eliminate some of these SSOs due to contractor breaks. Inspection of creek crossings by the utility department, along with KSA, have identified main lines along creeks where bank stabilization needs to take place to protect those lines. The outlook is very promising in reducing these categories of SSOs and achieve the goal of less than five per 100 miles. So, we're on the right downward track. We just need to continue what we're doing, and I think we can address some of these contractor issues, some of the lines that are being designed for replacement. Those SSOs should go away. So, I think there's a real high probability that we're going to continue that downward Grease interceptors. Grease interceptors are devices to collect grease at restaurants, hospitals. There's a lot of places where there's grease that needs to be intercepted before it gets into the sanitary sewer. Food service establishments are being inspected at least once a year, more frequently for those that are in violation. Failure to adequately clean the grease traps allows grease to accumulate in the sewer, resulting in blockages and possible sanitary sewer overflows. Note the number of grease-related SSOs in 2023 was 21 SSOs attributed to grease, while in 2024, it was reduced to six. So, your staff is out there inspecting these grease traps. They're talking to the restaurant owners, making sure that they're cleaning them out appropriately and as frequently as they should be, and those in violation are following up and checking on them to make sure they're doing what they need to be doing. High-frequency cleaning program. Your staff does this in-house. Some sewers collect debris due to low flows, very flat slopes, and occasionally grease and root accumulation. Where blockages reoccur, the line is put on a high-frequency cleaning list. In some instances, the pipe is found to be defective, and it's placed on a high-frequency cleaning list until repairs can be made. This preventive maintenance work is critical to minimize SSOs and achieve compliance. City staff perform the cleaning and maintain a history of the repairs on each of these Manhole inspections. In 2021, we completed 11,800 manhole inspections. That's every manhole in the system. Condition assessments were made on each of those manholes, and repairs have either been done or in the process of being finished. According to the consent decree, those assets have to be re-inspected now. So, reinspection of manholes was initiated and started in 2024. The purpose is to find these problems again while they're minor and less costly to repair. Main lines, basically the same type of thing. Inspection of all mains, 718 miles of them, were completed in 2024, again, from here to Denver, Colorado. That's how many lines were closed-circuit TV inspected. Reinspection is a requirement, and reinspection is now initiated and started to reinspect these lines and determine the condition and determine what repairs need to be made. It's going to be an ongoing thing, reinspection followed by rehabilitation, so we can extend the life of these assets. Ongoing design and capacity project. The capacity projects are where existing sewers are undersized for existing and future flows. So, the hydraulic model was run of the collection system. It identified sewer lines that just aren't big enough to handle current flows, rainfall, or future growth. And those capacity projects have been identified. They're in various stages of completion, and some are still under design. Group six rehabilitation construction is on schedule. So, these projects are on schedule where we stand right now. Smoke testing. That testing, some of you probably are very familiar with it. We force smoke into the sanitary sewer, and it comes up out of the ground wherever there's a break in the sanitary sewer. If smoke exits, then rainwater can get in. And Langdon is performing the design and oversees the instructions associated with the private lateral program. Many defects on the private lateral have been attributed to missing cleanout caps. We've replaced 2,900 cleanout caps that were missing and allowed rainwater into the sanitary In summary, all reports deliverables required under the consent decree have been delivered on time. Groups one, two, three, four, and five rehabilitation has completed within the required consent decree time. Capacity design and construction projects are progressing on schedule with the possibility of delays on specific projects due to easement, acquisition, permitting, and material lead times on certain materials. So, there's a very few projects that we anticipate may have some problems because of those items. But again, the vast majority of these projects are on schedule for completion. Since 2017, we have come a long way in achieving compliance with the consent decree. This has truly been a team effort of staff working with consultants and contractors to bring the collection system into compliance and develop a sustainable operation and maintenance program. The consent decree has touched every city department. This has been a summary of the progress to date, and be glad to answer any questions you have, but so far, it's pretty good news. We're making the right trends downward.
Any questions for Jim?
That presentation?
You know, it really is a good presentation, and we needed to rehabilitate the system. I agree with that. But when you talk about the EPA and the TCEQ, it's really not isolated just to Tyler. I mean, we're not just one city in the state that needed to do repairs. What's happening statewide with other cities in this similar deal with EPA?
Houston is under their consent decree. San Antonio's been under theirs for quite some time. City Corpus Christi is in year two of their consent decree, and their consent decree almost reads verbatim your consent decree. And their system's about three times bigger than yours, and they have 10 years to complete theirs. So, they've got a lot of work ahead of them. And of course, their system is a lot flatter, and instead of the few lift stations that you have, they have 130 lift stations. They have a lift station on every corner, it seems like. So, they've got some real issues ahead of them, and like your system, they have a lot of clay pipe. And clay pipe that's put in in 1912, it can look like it was brand new, or it can be all broken up and shattered. The soils have a lot to do with that. When the soils move around, so does your clay pipe. So, other cities are under administrative action. A lot of the smaller cities have joined what's called the SSO initiative through TCEQ. It's kind of a, I call it a get-out-of-jail-free card. If they join the program, there will be no enforcement action while they're doing their own plan of rehabilitation and construction. So, it's a way to not have to go through the entire legal process for them. So, every city's kind of, well, I'd say every city. There's some cities in North Texas where their sewers are all PVC pipe. They're less than 50 years old. It's where large growth has taken place, so they have new materials, new construction. They're well under the five SSOs per 100 miles. But cities with any age to their system, they're all experiencing the same thing.
Mr. Wynn, I have a question. So, Jim, you mentioned about that 11th year. What is it with that extra year?
So, we have to complete everything within the consent decree by year 10.
Right.
And then, according to consent decree, we won't let you out of the consent decree until you've been in compliance for one year, one full year. So, the earliest you can really apply, and I'll defer to the legal, but I believe you can only apply to get out of the consent decree or to be relieved from the consent decree at year 11.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Well, Jim, Tiffany, Kate, everybody with Tyler Water Utilities, thanks for an excellent job.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to zoning, Z1. Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The first two items are rather related, so I was going to plan on presenting both of those together, but they will need two separate motions. So, the first item, Z1, is a request for a concept plan amendment for the Cumberland Park development. Park development. This is down at Cumberland Road and South Broadway. It's essentially in the mall area, but it also includes undeveloped land to the east of the Cumberland Mall. This was, this area was zoned, PCD, RPO, which is for office, and then agricultural back in 2003. The intent was, when it was approved, it was established. They established their concept plan, the design standards that the development, subsequent development would have to follow. When it was approved, the ordinance required that any substantial change to the concept plan would have to come back through city council for consideration. I've got to go to that. So this was in 2003. As you see, the zonings that were, well, they weren't really approved, but this was the plan for the zonings. And essentially, you had all the commercial green there with RPO along the east and northeast, and then strip-a-bag zoning for a buffer along the north and east as well. The request today is to amend that northeast area, to amend the concept plan to show a multifamily zoning for Z2, the proposed development. This, and so this request is to allow the concept plan to be amended to show this zoning configuration. This doesn't approve that. Z2 will approve the zoning, but this does amend the concept plan that's in the approved plan development. So this is really the first step that's required to move on to Z2. This is just how the area is developed right now. Developed right now, you see all the commercial development, and then large lot, single-family to the north and east. Since these are two separate items, we did notify this request to neighboring properties. It was actually by ordinance, we were required to notify everybody that was in the original 2003 zoning buffer, the 200 feet. We did receive just under 6% protest from the property owners in red. Their concerns with this, along with the others, the next case, is that just kind of the loss of the green space is very, is a highly vegetated area right now with wildlife that I think they're just kind of concerned about how that plays out in the future as the area is developed. And Z2 is the actual zone change request for that portion right there, which is currently zoned, PCD, Plan Commercial District, RPO, which is Office District, and then Agricultural District. They are leaving the 50-foot strip of agricultural zoning on the north side, and it's not included in this zoning area there. That's to remain. And I was intending to provide another buffer between whatever's developed here and those property owners to the north. Those properties to the north are, again, single-family homes, and everything else is rather commercial in nature. There is a floodplain along the east side of this that provides a natural buffer between this development and properties to the east. This request would amend the future land use guide to mixed-use center. Again, here's the current, how it currently looks. In the past couple of years, the properties to the south, those have been developed with duplexes and quadplexes and townhome developments. And this is really kind of an extension of that. It's a little bit less dense than what's already built. They are rezoning, the request to rezone this entire area to the planned multifamily, but they're only submitting for a site plan for Phase One, which is on the north side. The remainder of that will be zoned without a site plan. When that solidifies, then the applicant will have to come to force city council and request a site plan approval for everything to the south. So here's the site plan, proposed site plan for this portion that they plan to develop. These are, this is essentially single-family homes or detached homes and duplexes on one large lot. Sometimes it's characterized as horizontal multifamily because it's really still developed like a multifamily development with, instead of having streets, they're just kind of fire lanes or drive aisles. They do have open space and other amenities. Within this development, it is gated for the residents. This site plan proposes 251 units. Again, those are in a mixture of detached units and, or two units duplexes. They are all single-story units, and they're not stacked on top of each other like an apartment complex. The density is about 6.2 units per acre, which is still kind of on the lower end, low-end, medium-density development. And so, as you see here, this is the proposed layout. They do still have that buffer along the north side and do have some open space to the north and the east that will, again, buffer the existing developments, or residential developments to the east and north. This is the property as it currently is. Like I mentioned, we did receive just under 4% letters of opposition from neighbors. And again, the concerns were related to kind of how the area developed and making sure that, you know, the drainage is done correctly and that they plan to preserve that greenbelt or that buffer yard, that ag buffer strip to protect the homeowners from the effects of this development. And so one of the good things about this is that we do have the site plan. You can see what they plan to develop. It is on the lower density side, but it does require a zone change because of the, because of the proposed development. And again, like I mentioned before, to the south, those are townhomes already. This is kind of a step down from that towards Cumberland Road. With that, I believe the applicant is here. They can answer some of the more finer details if you have those. The planning commission recommended approval of both Z1 and Z2.
All right. Any questions for Kyle on Z1 or Z2?
Kyle, I saw the note on there to verify, and I remember in the meeting with the developer that all of this development is restricted to one story. Is that correct?
Any other questions for Kyle or the applicant? I don't have any other cards on this, so.
We're voting on these individually?
Yes. Z1?
Move to approve Z1.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? Also, a favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll vote on Z2.
Move to approve Z2.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? Also, a favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Next item is a zone change request from R1B, Single Family, to R1D, Single Family Attached and Detached Residential District. The applicant plans to develop a detached, single-family home on this property here. It's at the corner of Kennedy and North Ross Avenue. It is a, it's an irregularly shaped lot, and so the applicant is requesting the zone change to make better use or have more flexibility in the development standards for that property. It is located within the north end planning area, and so the zone change may help facilitate development of the property itself. Mainly, the R1D would allow a 15-foot rear yard setback instead of a 25-foot rear yard. The property does back up to an alley right of way. And so, yeah, I don't believe that they plan to utilize the entire space. I think it just allows them to orient the home in a manner that best fits the area. The surrounding properties are zoned, R1B, single-family homes. This will also be a single-family home. There is also R2 in the area which would allow for duplex development. There may be a mixture of duplexes, but I believe most of that area is single-family detached. This request would amend the future land use guide to the single-family and single-family attached because it's going to be R1D, but the applicant, again, does not plan to build two homes or attach those. They plan, again, to build one detached, single-family home. This is the property here. It's currently undeveloped. They have developed a house to the south recently, and I think they plan to align that this home with that one. Of the notices we sent out, number received in favor or in opposition, the planning commission recommends approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle?
No, I have no questions. So moved.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, a favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This is also a request from R1B, the R1D. This is on North Gaston Avenue, also within the north end planning area. You see here, this property is a through lot, so it has access on both Hill and Gaston. The applicant plans to subdivide the property down the middle, so as to have, so as to build a home on both of those lots, one facing Hill, one facing Gaston. Because of the lot size, and once they make that subdivision, it would require rezonings at R1D. But again, they do plan to build two detached, single-family homes, which is how the area is developed. The area is all zoned, R1B. Those are all larger lots. But this, again, this request would help facilitate the development of infill housing within the north end. It would amend the future land use guides to single-family attached and detached, and they plan to do two detached homes. Again, you see in the property here, they plan to subdivide the, down the north, in half, extending the property line in the middle from north to south. Of the notices I were sent, number received in favor or in opposition, the planning commission recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
So moved.
Second. Who was the second? Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, a favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Chief Cobol.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I have R1 this morning. It's a request that the city council consider adoption of a resolution authorizing submission of an application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding through the Office of the Texas Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division and for grant funding through the State Homeland Security Program as managed by the East Texas Council of Governments to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and/or enhancing the City of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities. This request this year, we asked for a couple of items, but they've already had the meeting, so we know that we're only going to get one of these items. So it's about half the amount. The one item that we said had priority over the other one is a Ramon chemical detection device. It can detect chemicals, explosives, without opening the container. So it uses a laser to actually beam through the outside of the container and tell us what's on the inside. It also can detect narcotics as well, so fentanyl and things like that. This device will allow us to be able to look inside of something and see what chemicals in there. So it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing submission of an application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding through the Office of the Texas Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division and for grant funding through the State Homeland Security Program as managed by the East Texas Council of Governments to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and/or enhancing the City of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities. This will be used by two of our regional response teams. Both our regional hazmat team and our bomb team would be using this as well.
There's no match, correct?
Zero matching dollars.
I like that. All right. Any questions for chief?
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also, a favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please, chief. M1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Nikki Ingram, and I'm a project engineer for Tyler Water Utilities. I'm here today to present agenda item M1 for the well survey Phase Two project. So a little history about this project. In July of 2022, TCEQ conducted an investigation and noted several of our wells might be in a deteriorated condition. Compliance with 16 Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 76, required deteriorated wells to be plugged or repaired. Upon further review, we discovered that we could camera survey the wells to prove they were in a non-deteriorated, deteriorated state, and then put a temporary cap on them instead of permanently plugging them. This solution is cost-effective. It's about a tenth of the cost to get the well camera surveyed and then put a temporary cap on it versus permanently plugging the well. And so we conducted initial camera surveys that confirmed that wells two, four, and five were in a non-deteriorated state, and we could temporarily cap them instead of permanently plug them. So Phase Two of this project involves temporarily capping wells two, four, and five, and then conducting camera surveys on the remaining wells. We have eight of them. There are seven, eight, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, and 17. And then the contractor we're using is Advanced Water Wells Technology. And then there'll be one final phase of this project, and then that'll include capping or plugging the remaining wells based on the camera survey results. So Phase Two of the project will take place between April and June of 2025, and Phase Three is expected to take place between July and September of 2025. So it is my recommendation that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a capital improvements project contract in the amount of $151,198.92 with Advanced Water Wells Technology for the well survey Phase Two project through buy-war contracts 672-22 and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures or proceeds of future debt. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Nikki?
I've got one. Nikki, by capping the wells, if down the road we need them, can we put these back in service?
Yes. So with the temporary cap, we can put them back in service. We'll need to reinstall a new pump and the piping to the wells. It could be costly, but we could put them back in service if needed.
Move to approve M1. Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Also, a favor, say aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thanks, Nikki. Tiffany.
Good morning, again.
Good morning. Good morning.
Okay. Item M2 is for the consent decree, Group Nine Cleaning and CCTV contract for Basin 13. So we are in year nine of our consent decree, which means that this is Group Nine of our cleaning and inspection of our sanitary sewer system. At the beginning of the consent decree, the city was divided into basins, and we prioritized those basins based on size and criticality. We are focusing on the smaller diameter lines, although there are a few larger diameter lines as well that we included in this package. So Group Nine is actually the reinspection of Basin 13. So we inspected Basin 13 the first time in 2018. We've made it through our entire system, and now we're back at Basin 13 again. There's approximately 643,000 linear feet of sewer line that we'll be inspecting, ranging from six inches all the way up to 42 inches. And the contract amount is $1,500,500. amount is one million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. We received bids on March eleventh, and we had a really great response. There were seven contractors that were interested in this, and the low bidder was ProPipe, who we have worked with in previous contracts and had a very great experience with them. So my recommendation today is that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with ProPipe in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents for the consent decree group nine cleaning and CCTV of wastewater lines for basin thirteen.
Any questions for Tiffany?
Yeah, I've got one. Tiffany, will that be kind of the normal rotation on the reinspection of these, about that timeframe?
Yes, yeah. We should work our way through the system about every seven years.
Okay. Move to approve, M two.
Heard good.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McCellar. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Leanne.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
As we prepare to develop Stewart Park, we have been coordinating with MHS Planning and Design. We already had our public meetings for that park, and we got some great feedback, and they helped us facilitate that as well. MHS Planning and Design will provide design services, which will include surveying detailed site, park, and utility design, all necessary jurisdictional permitting, the identification of utility conflicts if there are any, coordination with utility companies and outside agencies, environmental coordination, any other items necessary to successfully develop the project. So it is our recommendation that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with MHS Planning and Design to prepare Stewart Park design plans in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
You know, I really like what I see out there so far, but it's going to be interesting to see what Mr. Spencer comes up with for the remaining part of the project, so looking forward to that. Any questions for Leanne?
Do we have a timeline on when that garage is going to be torn down?
No, right now we are waiting for Tech dot, Cameron has, Cameron Williams, our traffic engineer, has been overseeing that project, and we are waiting for them to completely get through their punch list in order for them to turn it over to us. They don't want any other contractors out there until that's complete. So I think Cameron had told me in the past, sometime in April.
Anyone else?
Moved to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Haney, second by Hawkins. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Good morning. This is an item to allow for a right-of-way use agreement, and more specifically, it's a parking easement. And what we're looking at today is along Irwin and Ferguson. So in looking at this map here, you can see the white spaces along Ferguson and then along Irwin. You have twenty-one along Irwin and then twenty-three along Ferguson that would be impacted. There is a mixture of head-in parking and parallel parking that would be impacted through this parking easement or right-of-way use agreement. And to draw a similar situation, we have an existing development at the corner here at Bonner and Ferguson, just right next door to us, and there is a similar situation there with parking. So to clarify, we have our existing traveling lanes on both streets, Irwin and Ferguson. This parking easement would not impact the actual traveling lanes. It only impacts the parkway, which is typically that area where you see the grass and the sidewalk. So these part, these parking easements are only going to be a net part of the overall right-of-way. So it's basically building in that parking into the parkway. So you still, this will not impact the traveling lanes as they exist today, is only insetting this parking into the overall development and making use of that, what would typically be maybe green space, sidewalk, curb, gutter. That part, that element is being moved in towards the development and then allowing for the parking here that is adjacent. And this is just an example for illustrative purposes only, to show you kind of what it might look like. And this is more detail for this specific development, showing you where these parking spaces would be. You do see some bulb outs and maybe some, some areas there on the map where it's not just a constant stream of parallel parking, like you might see in other areas along streets, but it, there is some breakup there. And there is more parking available for this development inside, interior to the development. This is just simply adding some more exterior parking.
So is that a sidewalk that I see in front?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, public sidewalk, yes.
So Heather, on this, the developer will be responsible for all the costs related to, basically it's a cutout into the property to put the parallel parking, leaving the sidewalk, curb, everything?
Yes, they are responsible for that. They're responsible for the maintenance of the parking area. The only part they wouldn't, and this is typical for anything, is if, you know, there's any city utilities that need to be repaired, the city is responsible for that. Another part, element of this agreement that legal was able to identify for us to resolve was if the use were to ever change, that this agreement would be, have to be looked at again, because this is along with the use.
And also, those areas are brick streets, so the cutouts will be, for the parallel parking will be brick?
Not necessarily. What you see in other areas, like the development right next door, their parking is concrete.
Well, this looks a lot better than the map I saw last week, because the one I saw last week, the appearance was that the parallel parking was going to be in the street, and I've never seen us execute an easement for parking within a street, so I like the clarification. So we do have the applicant here, do y'all want to hear from Mr. Hershey, just as if he wants to share with us what he's planning on doing? You don't have to.
Sure, come on up.
Come on up. I want to hear your, I want to see your, or hear your.
Well, I brought a bunch of pictures, but they, I guess they didn't include them, so I can circulate those if you guys want to see it, but we're very excited. Will Hershey, managing member of West Oak Property Development, we're excited to get back to work. It's been a little bit since we have been building in downtown, so we're excited. I think the way that Greg Mitchell and Benchmark has put this together with the city, there's a great flow in the area, it's going to increase traffic, there's going to be two-hundred-and-one unit apartment complex, six buildings. Amenities, I know Mayor Warren, you love your pickleball court, so we included one of those. You're happy to stop by anytime that you want. We'll also have a indoor golf facility, so we're excited about that. Cool, obviously gated community, so happy to answer any questions, but we're excited to get this pushed through and get started.
Any questions for Mr. Hershey?
Yeah, I just got one. Will, the extra parking, is that just needed because of the number of units or guests, or just, it's always nice to have extra parking?
Sure, so we always want to maximize the ability for our tenants to have extra parking. With that, it made sense to go ahead and just redo all the curbscape and take care of having additional parking for the units. So this is part of our master plan to have all of those in there, and yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Hershey? Cameron, can you come up for just a second? So the, the parallel parking that is on Ferguson down by the police station, is the parallel parking going to be in front of the entry and exit to the police department?
Yeah, not at all. You can see here, I'm sorry, but yeah, if you see that you have your police department, have you identified it on the map? I think that's, yeah, so that's the police department, and the first time that you see any of the parallel parking is actually beyond that point to the east.
Okay, I just want to make sure from a safety standpoint that you're good with all this.
I would say just from a standpoint on any, just so you know, anytime you start doing on-street parking, you're increasing impediments to flow of traffic and some safety concerns. So that's going to be anytime that that happens. But you got to understand in your downtown areas, your urban areas, you're going to have the need for additional parking, so those are exceptions that you're going to have to take into consideration and understanding when you accept something. Anytime you start getting on-street parking, the preference is to try to do parallel, just that's going to have less movements into now the roadway. So those are just, again, things to take in mind and keep in consideration when you're developing something.
Anybody have any questions for Cameron? Okay, thank you.
Moved to approve, M four. Second.
Second. Got a motion by Hawkins, second by McCellar. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. All right, board members, B one, Cassandra.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, I'm requesting that the city council consider making appointments to fill vacancies on the Disabilities Issues Review Board, the Historical Preservation Board, the Parks Board, and the Main Street Board. At the annuals boards and commission appointment process back in September, the council did not appoint members to the Disabilities Issues Review Board, so today I'm coming with you, coming before you to appoint several members to that particular board, and also they need a chair. So we received eleven applications for that particular board. The board liaison for that particular board has requested the top seven positions be filled with the people that are listed, which is Robert Ogden, Juanita Fletcher, Nisha Lestage, Craig Ellis, Patricia Glass, Mary Karkoff, and Jeremy Flowers, but it is totally up to council to what you would like to see on the board. But those seven members have been recommended.
So does anybody have any questions for Cassandra on the Disability Issues Board? Do we need to, can we vote for all these at one time, or do we have to do it individually? Altogether? Okay. All right, no questions so far? All right, Historical Preservation Board.
Okay, also, oh, you're going to do it all at once, and also we need to appoint Robert Ogden as the chair for that particular board. Sorry about that. On the Historical Preservation Board, that particular board needed an attorney, so we had Stuart Bannum to send an application for the board, and he's an attorney.
Any questions on Cassandra on this one?
I mean, must be a guy named Stuart.
Another one. All right, Parks Board.
Parks Board, we had one person to resign, so went back and pulled all the applications for this particular board, and the recommendation is for Denise Smith for that particular board from the board liaison.
Any questions for Cassandra on the Parks Board? All right, Main Street Board.
Main Street Board, the president of the Hoarder Tower has rolled off, so today would ask that there's been recommendation to approve Lindsay Dur of the Hoarder Tower for that particular board.
All right, any questions for Cassandra on the Main Street Board? Okay, I'm going to make this easy. I'll entertain a motion to put Robert Ogden as chair, Juanita Fletcher, Lisa Lestage, Craig Ellis, Patricia Glass, Mary Karkoff, sorry, Jeremy Flowers on that board, Stuart Bannum on the Historical Preservation Board, Denise Smith on the Parks Board, and Lindsay Dur on the Main Street Board.
So moved.
Okay. Second. Got a motion by McCellar, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are to the consent agenda. Move to approve, consent agenda is ready. Second. Got a motion by Curtis, Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now, the city manager's report.
Sounds like you built it up a little bit too. The expectations are too high on that one. So, spring is in the air, I mean, the weather is wonderful outside, and a great Tyler cleanup is coming up to give you an opportunity to get out and pick up some trash. That's coming up on April twelfth, and the focus this year is on the significant anniversaries we have with Tech Dot's fortieth anniversary of the Adopt a Highway program, which began here in Tyler, and Keep Tyler Beautiful's thirtieth anniversary of this year. In fact, you can learn more about this on Roses and Weeds podcast, this just came out last week, features Catherine Cromer from Tech Dot and Casey Williams, our Keep Tyler Beautiful coordinator. They focused on litter and highlighted programs like the Adopt a Highway and Adopt a Spot program that you can do here in Tyler. If you get a chance, with all the work that's been going on at W. Winters Park, our new mural installation has been done over there on the bathroom there. It's a vibrant and meaningful addition to the ongoing park revitalization. While the park is still under construction, the mural has been completed. The mural's theme revolves around pollinators. The artwork was created by artist Hilly Sherman, who is known for his distinctive art airbrush style. To switch things over to the airport, the airport's moving through a site study and process for the construction of a new air traffic control tower. This is kind of one of the pieces that we look at for the airport that would be critical in future years and decades. And so at this stage, local controllers recently reviewed or provide the opportunity to compare three potential sites using virtual reality technology. After validating models of the airport and each potential site location, a team of engineers and FAA personnel conducted comparisons and evaluated criteria such as runway and taxiway visibility, different sun reflectivity scenarios in nighttime operations. The site identified as the most advantageous in terms of safety, efficiency, cost, and future expansion will then move forward into the design phase. The airport will be competing for construction funding with the hope of initiating construction sometime in the near future. And then finally, fire departments from all over Texas are assisting with the wildfires in Texas from Panhandle extending down to the hill country. The Tyler Fire Department, which is new to the TIFMS program, has sent a member to join up with a Tex Arcana team fighting one of the largest wildfires in Texas history. Fire Senior Captain Daniel Bailey is on a fourteen-day deployment in the Panhandle before returning to Tyler, so we're proud of him and hope he is safe out there and all comes back all well.
All right, any questions for the city manager before we adjourn?
I'll add one thing. You mentioned the Great Tyler Cleanup on April twelfth. Right after that event, you could go to another park and do Battle of Badges.
Oh, Battle of what?
Badges, softball game between the fire department and the police department.
They got some really great umpires this year. Who are they?
I don't think it's us two.
All right, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, adjourn.